Good evening, everyone. Notice hereby given that City Council of City of Alpine, Texas will hold a regular meeting at 5:30 PM, November 16, 2021, in the City Council chambers at 803 West Holland Avenue in the City of Alpine, Texas, for the purpose of considering the attached agenda. This notice is posted pursuant to Texas Open Meeting Act, BTCA, Government Code 551.043. Public notice, the use of cellular phones and sound activated pages are prohibited in City Council chambers during the meeting of the City Council. Members of the audience will be provided opportunity to address the council on any agenda item after determination of a quorum and proof of notice of the meeting. Remarks will be limited to the public comment and public hearing portion of the meeting, limited to three minutes per person, in accordance with the Texas Government Code 551.007 and Attorney General's Opinion Number KP0300. For public comments, please speak into the microphone located at the podium and state your name and address. If you have a petition and other information pertaining to your subject, please present it to the City Secretary prior to the meeting. State law generally prohibits the council from discussing or taking any action on any issue not included on the agenda, but if appropriate, the council may schedule a topic for future discussion or refer the matter to staff. No personal attacks on council members or city staff members will be allowed. The mayor or and city council members may call point of order to stop personal attacks. If an individual continues to personally attack elected official or staff member in the meeting, they may be barred. Call this meeting to order. Please everybody rise. Thank you all. City Secretary, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor, all council members are present here today, and the notice of the meeting was posted on November 12 at 2:00 AM.
Okay, we've got any public comments? Anybody sign up?
First up, we have Mr. Ramon Olivas.
Mr. Ramon Olivas.
Honorable Mayor and distinguished City Council members, greetings, first of all. And I come here basically to share a couple of comments. And one is, on November 3, 2020, I submitted, when I was councilman for Ward 2, a request, an agenda item, that said, discuss, consider, and take appropriate action on approved projects and projected costs for improvement of facilities at Lujan Baseball Field. It was included in the November 3 meeting, and there was a discussion, and there was a review of what the enhanced projects would be about. I submitted photographs of a need for recover of badges, edges, because they're considered unsafe, also a new water fountain, a little bit of repair to the dudettes, especially for the kids, because they're somewhat unsafe. And also the idea of purchasing soccer field equipment for those that might want to do more than baseball. Landscaping, and also the idea of possibly setting up two security lights, not the large, tall, but security lights to provide some safety for the kids and also the patrons participating. Along with that, I submitted a budget request, which was actually by me here, including myself, together myself, in association with a resident from Ward 2, in the amount of $6,050. For everything that I mentioned, that amount of money would of course not have been enough, but it would be an incentive to do things. I presented it to council, and we discussed. At the end of the discussion, I made motion that the council to approve the projects at the safer amount of monies. The council approved. But it was a strange time, because we were too zoomed. The pandemic was basically at its peak. And so I have no idea what happened, although the activity was approved. And then I was trying to get involved with the funding for the next year to see if it was included in the budget, and I wasn't able to do so, so I have no idea whether it was approved or not. But it seems like it's one of those projects that's out there lingering. But I also found, as I went into the website, looking for the minutes regarding the project, and it's not in the minutes. Why? I don't know. But I think it's because of the time period and everything that was going on. It's one of those that just sort of seep through the cracks.
That was your three minutes. Oh, that was the three-minute time.
Okay, and all I ask is, you know, reconsider. And I think it's something that's benefit to Ward 2.
City Secretary, can you look at the, see the planning?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
It was, the timeframe was November?
Look, 19?
2020.
2019?
20.
2020?
Last year.
Okay.
November 3rd.
All righty, next up, we have Ms. Karen Cantrell.
My name is Karen Cantrell. I'm from Ward 1. And good evening, council.
Good evening, Karen.
Secretary. I just want to touch on an item on the agenda tonight, the coin-operated machines. A couple of others and points from last meeting when the owners know we're here. One of the first things they said was, "The old people love it." Well, I imagine they do. But you can't make me believe that you're putting all this money in your machine just to get a little toy, just to get a little ding dong, or pants or a book. There has to be some other reason you keep pumping coins in there. The other thing is, I hope that you would limit the number of machines to maybe 10, or at least monitor them, since you've got it at unlimited, and see what kind of behavior goes on there. See, you know, because, I mean, social security, people may not have a lot of money, and these days, things cost a lot more, so I know they don't have a lot of money. So maybe we could keep an eye on that, since you've made it unlimited, because gambling's not allowed in Texas. Yeah, it's coming, but it's not here yet. So I just, I just don't want any bad things to happen to the seniors or anybody. And I'm not against people making a buck. They said that that was the only thing they could do. That's not really true, okay? I mean, there's lots of jobs in town. So just, just please, I'm going to ask you again, please just monitor it and see what happens, because gambling's dangerous. It's an addiction. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Karen.
Anybody else? Mr. Oscar Cobles.
Oscar Cobles, okay.
Good evening, council and mayor. Oscar Cobles, Ward 5. I wanted to just briefly touch on item number 7 from the agenda, approval and the authorization of city manager to retain special counsel. First of all, I wanted to thank Megan for the temporary job at pavement in Hancock, and thank you so much for that. Right quickly, this item, I believe, it has to do with your city attorney. A lot of us know that the city is presently facing a lawsuit, but it may shimar that did not originate in the city. So we're in a bind by your present city attorney. Now here, the city cannot afford to go here and pay the invoices of your attorney. If there's any project that he is going into, the city has no authorization to pay for the engineering/attorney. I suggest that he needs to provide an attorney, and all the invoices be directed to him immediately. And this is facts, not chisme. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Yeah, that's all.
Okay, let's go ahead and move on. We don't have any presentations? And I don't have a report, city attorney report?
Not too much, Mayor and council. We have municipal court this morning, and continue to have municipal court two days every other week. That's become successful. It's having the intended effect. A lot of the people who get tickets now are learning that they should just go and pay their tickets instead of coming to court, because we have court offered enough that people realize they can't just put it off and it sort of disappears in the future. We'll have court again Thursday, which begins every two weeks. The Warren Roundup was successful. We were able to pick up quite a few people and bring them in with the general results, and then just coming in to pay their fines and taking care of their business. I recall the best thing I pulled up with Megan on how to call Tyler Technologies that had gotten some money from the city to provide services to the police department, and they were providing the services. After a couple of letters from me, they decided to repay the city all the money we paid them, so we can get a refund from that. I finished up some work on an airport lease and been doing some replant research with Megan and Gio, so just trying to take care of y'all's business.
What kind of refund was that, sir?
I'm sorry?
What kind of refund was that?
It was a company named Tyler Technologies that had agreed to provide some ticket writing software and machines for the police department. And ended the contract about a year ago, nine months ago, and they were providing the services, and we had to pay the city. So asked them to repay the money, and they agreed to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, anymore? Thanks, sir. Let's go to city manager report.
I actually didn't prepare one for today, but I have the financials here, sir.
Okay.
In your packets, I included the information on October. If you've noticed, and I know Judy was very excited because she understood the format, the format for the finance reports moving forward are going to be the itemized reports. So it specifically shows everything in the general fund, the water, sewer sanitation, and it breaks it down line by line. This was in the package that was posted to our website. This shows everything that's been spent for a month, for a year, and the percentage, and then what's left. So I thought it was really important, because everyone is very concerned with the financials, and I don't blame anyone, is to have that, not a bird's eye view anymore. The bird's eye view would be the summary. We should be at about 8% of our expenditures and revenues. We are in line, but also to understand where the money all goes to. I know Chris and I kind of briefly had a little email back and forth. We operate based on the basic needs of the city. We don't do a performance type of budget, where we have all these expectations of projects and things that we want to perform on, and this is how we're going to pay for it. What we've done the past several years is we've looked at the budget from, what do we need to get by, to pay our employees, and to get the equipment, to provide a list of very limited projects. We know that we have massive projects. I will preach till the end of day, our wastewater plant, our water infrastructure, our street infrastructure. But it's knowing, okay, where did the money come from? How do we do it? It's not just we're going to buy paving material, but you have to have the equipment to do it. But the equipment's 30 years old. You have to replace it, repair it. Well, that means you've got to put that in your budget. You've got to plan for it. So I wanted everyone to really see how basically our budget operates. We have a software that is very simple. I would love the Cadillac does accounting. It does 90% of your work for you. You don't have to create Excel spreadsheets, but the city can afford it. You're looking at anywhere from half a million to a million. We have something that's affordable currently for the city of Alpine, so it is very simple. No, this cannot be transferred into Excel cleanly. It doesn't provide the cell lineup properly. So everything is in PDF, and if we want to, we have to recreate it into Excel. But as you go through it and you notice, there's things within the budget that there are questions, and I myself am going to call myself out. I made two mistakes during the budget process. I will bring those up here shortly. But you get to see everything and where the money's going. It's a great opportunity to ask more detailed questions. Why do we spend this much in this account, or what is this account exactly for? This is exactly what the budget process looks like. This is the exact same format. So this is the end of October. So for the end of October, I made some notes. Typically, I would review these on a monthly basis and then sit down with city manager, whoever asks, including my own staff, and kind of went back and make sure on the finance end, did we actually do this, you know, did we put the invoice in the wrong account? Did we need to re-categorize it? Did we miss something? So I have a few comments for you guys on the finance for October. So this is the first month, so there's no major anything really going on. We're just in the fiscal year. We just finished up the paving season before we can actually start the next paving season. We don't have any major projects happening right this minute. They're all in there and planned for the year, but like I said, first month. Some of the comments I wanted you all to be made aware of was, some of the line items will be at a higher rate. They'll be at 25% or 94%. For example, the appraisal district, family crisis, unemployment, our workman's comp and liability insurance. We pay these quarterly, so they are going to register higher than any other line item. Our retirement under our fire department, it is at roughly 50%. We do that one biannually. We only pay it twice a year. And then the two big ones that should stick out under the general fund would be our children's advocacy center, and then the bank note for the pumper truck. These are one-time payments, and they're paid in October. The child advocacy center tries to wait, see how they're getting into their year, into their calendar year, and then, of course, they make that request. These are all, of course, approved payments by council. But there's things that need to be watched as well. And I've highlighted these, our building services. We currently do not have a specific line item budgeted for contract labor. We do have a contract building inspector who comes in that is really just knocking out permits left and right. But we pull from the salary line, or credit, we pull from the contract line item towards the time we actually hire a building inspector. A budget amendment will come before council, and we'll actually amend the salary for that inspector position to put it towards the contract. It's really hard to predict how many inspections he's going to do, and do we put, you know, 15,000 towards it, or do we do, you know, 10 or 5? So that's an amendment that will come before council. The human resource overtime. Our human resource coordinator, she's split part-time with human resource and part-time for finance. So depending on what section of her duties she's doing, determines how it gets applied for overtime. We typically don't budget for administrative for overtime. It's not something we've really done in the past, but we do monitor to ensure, are we going to have overtime? Poor Gio can get overtime any moment. But because we've had, you know, all these openings, and we've got the job descriptions updated, and we're posting, and we're moving at such a full-force speed, she's put in a little extra time that's been pre-approved. The leased vehicle, this is my first mistake in the budget process. I did not budget, never caught it, none of us really caught it. The leased vehicle for the animal control department and the leased vehicle for the water department. Both of these departments do have leased vehicles. We do have a little bit of wiggle room. The street department and building maintenance has realigned their goals and their wants for the year. So we've actually moved those employees over, opening up a chunk of funding that we can utilize to cover those expenses. But the amendment will come to you in March, so that we kind of have the understanding of exactly what we're going to need, how much, and we can get that transferred to you. So there's no real, we're not missing the money, we're not having to pull it from somewhere. We're just going to do an amendment to what we've already approved, if council approves it. Under the enterprise fund, we call it the enterprise fund. It's the oldest fund that's an enterprise. This is our water, wastewater, and sanitation. This was the other item to be watched, was the leased vehicles, leased vehicles, and that one will be addressed as well. The airport, poor Abel over here. They have a very limited budget. In October, he got excited, "We need supplies. We need to fix our equipment. We need to get that tractor up and tearing everything down." Unfortunately, because his budget is smaller in those areas, his supplies, field maintenance, and field supplies are all rather high. Some of them are at 79%. He is literally after the first month. So these are things that him and I will discuss as we move forward to try to figure out what's the best move he can make with what he currently has budgeted. We have the hard conversation with either you've got to stop buying, you've got to be very careful, or we come before council with other opportunities and suggestions to help the airport move forward. The next one, under the airport, you'll notice that there is an encumbrance of $52,586. That is money that was set aside last year for the $95,000 required match for the lighting construction project. So we encumbered what we had put aside for last year, and then we have it budgeted, I believe, at 42 and some change for this year. So when we cut the check, which they will be requesting in the next month or so, it's actually already there. The council has approved it when they approved the grant, and we actually put the funds aside. It's coming from two fiscal years. The next one is, of course, the hotel tourism fund. If you pay any attention, you should be in shock. The revenue, there's nothing there. They've only brought in interest. That's not the case. Everything that got posted in October is actually September's collections, so it gets posted to the prior fiscal year, because it's revenue that was supposed to be paid in September. Of course, everyone pays the month after or the quarter after. So we go back in and we make sure we post it to the correct year. It would be a receivable for last year. So next month, you'll start seeing that flow coming in from what's actually being done this year. The gas fund. So the gas fund, he's a real strickler. Randy, his mom's really good about keeping up with his budget. One of the items he has is what's considered consulting and contract fees. He uses it for anything that really is a contract. So the software that the utility company uses specifically for the gas department is an annual payment. So it shows that a higher percentage of use is because we've taken that one-time item out of the contract and consulting fees. He also has another line item, which is called IT. It's fairly new. It's to cover software. So we'll sit down and we'll have the discussion of, we're going to go ahead and move that into software, because that's what that one-time be covered. It's the software to actually do the utility side of gas, the billing, the work orders, and all of that. So he is very good about all the ones he's had, and as we've kind of changed them and added them and tried to make them consistent, it's just that friendly reminder. Of course, if you look at the INS, there's really no comments. We have no debt payments until March. Most of our INS and our debt will come in in December, January, February. That's also when our property taxes are significantly higher, so you'll see a huge increase in the revenue for the general fund. The general fund starts off slow in October. It builds significantly as the property taxes come in, and then it kind of tapers off. The only big deposit that gets made after around February is our sales tax, and that's made monthly. So looking at our December to February timeframe for the property tax is important, because that kind of gives you an idea of where we're going for the rest of the year. Of course, we always encourage shop local. We do enjoy that sales tax. That's the other strong portion of our local revenue that we, actually, every year, we have significantly increased. I hope we continue that direction, so that would make up the difference for the remainder of the year. Any questions?
What's her headcount?
Do you want to discuss that now, or do you want to discuss it under your impression?
It doesn't matter if you want to just keep on, because this is what was on there, so whatever you want to do.
I pulled what I could. Our HR person is currently out for some family stuff. We have 79 employees. That's 72 full-time and seven part-time. And we have six councilmembers. And then I broke it down a little more. It's great information to have. Just for October, we did have two people who resigned. They found other jobs outside the city. We had three new hires, and we had one employee transfer within the city.
Who did we lose?
We lost a customer service clerk and the admin for streets.
I did want to apologize. I did ask her for this on Wednesday, which is our regular deadline. But I do realize it took a lot of time to put this together, so thank you for putting it. I would like to see this every second meeting, to allow you, you know, three weeks to kind of get prepared for it, kind of keep us up to date on where we are, if we're still on track.
I am very thankful for that, because the finance really is a big, it's a big thing for me, not just being the primary city or finance, but, you know, the city manager as well. And then you'll notice, over the years, if you're a regular here, the reports have changed every year, depending on guidance and feedback and information. I like to see all the numbers. I like to know, why are we at a negative? Why are we at a positive? What does it mean that we have negative in revenue? It means we brought in more than the budget. But to have those kinds of conversations, I really do appreciate it.
Yeah, no, let's go ahead and do that. But like I said, it's, this was wonderful. And but you giving a synopsis like that allows the people to know where we're at too, because they don't get access to this, or they could, but it's kind of hard for them to.
Oh, no, I love it this way. So this is my version.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Got a question on the airport lighting. Once we submit the matching funds and all the paperwork is in place, do we have any idea when we're going to start working on that?
Guess is as good as ours. The state has been very, they've been very informative. Things keep, so they're dependent on federal funding and state funding. So some of our projects have been pushed back, like the construction side of the lighting. We should have done it this past year, and we didn't. It's on track to starting spring of this on track, but that doesn't mean after Christmas or something happens. So it's on track to be done this year. Like I said, once, they haven't requested, excuse me, the check as of right now. I don't know if it's, maybe there's something in the woodworks that's changing it, but we've been told spring of this year, or 2022, this fiscal year.
Okay, so Abel works at Easter Basket with the lighting project in there.
He's got a big project going on now, so the airport will be very busy until 2025.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you. Questions? Okay, let's go ahead and let's move on to Abel.
Mayor, council. Did a slideshow for you. I was thinking of getting that together. Current project that we're working on is crack sealing and cleaning the taxiway 119. If you're not familiar with the airport, it's the same runway. One end is one, the other is 119. And they started on it, finished it up. The crack sealing and the cleaning, they did some, didn't have very many minor debt repairs to the pavement. They're sealing, they'll begin sealing, he was going to start tomorrow morning. And the apron is also being included with the runways, and this is to extend the life and preserve the pavement, so we won't have to do it sooner. And then the last part of the process is to stripe and mark the, put the markings on that they've taken off. And here's the schedule. We had a site kickoff meeting on the 28th that we met out there and discussed it. And the marking and the removal was done, actually, started on Sunday. So they're a little bit ahead of schedule. But delays could come, so it could even us out later on in the process. And the treatment, so this will run until December, this project, weather permitting, and materials also. And I think they're having trouble getting, there was a paint issue that they were having trouble with, so what they're going to do, they're going to give us a temporary painting, temporary paint that they're going to put on the runway, and then come back later to get the one that lasts longer. There was, there was an issue getting it done or getting the actual paint that we needed. But instead of not having it marked for two or three months, they're just going to give us a temporary marking, the temporary markings on the paint. So should be okay. So we won't have to, you know, have a runway that doesn't have any markings, because then we wouldn't be able to use it at night. And the next, another project that's going on is the helipad for the customs and border protection, which is going up next to the hangar that they lease. It was pending a lease agreement, which I was just told by Rod today. He sent it out this week, this week. So as soon as they get that lease signed, and we get it signed, it'll be ready to get started. And this will help free up ramp space on the way. it'll be ready to get started. And this, this will help free up ramp space on the west end of the ramp. Because they'll be just, they move their helicopters out to the little helipad and they just fly off from there. And they don't have to take up some of our other ramp space, which we can use for aircraft. And then these are the other projects, grant funded projects. As Megan said, the the runway lights, which is pending funding for fiscal year twenty twenty two. He said they're, they're just, they're still waiting on some money, which is, should be coming. They're not sure how that works. We just have to sit and wait. And then the the master layout plan, which is over twenty years old, that actually, that one got pushed up to fiscal year twenty three. This one we need to do so we can, it helps with the capital improvement plans. The property map will get a layout drawing. And it helps for planning, growth and future development there at the airport. Which will, it'll help us with the next, the AWAS project, which is so far, it's, it's pending twenty four, twenty five fiscal year. So that's another funding thing which could be pushed to the later date, but the the master layout plan will help out. And then I put our transient traffic, this is traffic that comes into the airport from just non-based aircraft. It just stopped by. I didn't, I didn't include the DPS or CBP, which are actually based out there or there will care now. It used to be first flight. I didn't put those, you know, those. And they fly out at times. Sometimes we're not, we're not there. They'll just head off and the transient traffic is what comes in, visitors, hunters, you know, people who see, visit their kids, college. Although we don't always, so these don't always include the people that are here on weekends because we don't catch everybody that's after hours. We don't know. We have a logbook that we keep inside the office where pilots should register their flights. So in case something happens or they'll say, oh, this was the last place they visited or, you know, to find out timing. Not everybody signs it or they don't see it, or they just, they just don't feel like putting their name on there. So these are, these numbers just reflect what we we see out there on the ramp flying and when we're not out mowing or doing something else. And also holidays. Yeah, if they're, you know, if we're off, we're not going to, you know, be looking up, mark everybody that we see. And here's a fuel sales for the last four months. As, as the for gallons, that is, I have the numbers. Which September was our highest sales for the last three years, which I saw was recorded sales. For some reason, September, you know, I, I wouldn't think it would be that high since kids are back in school. You would think it'd be, although we did have there was a rescue down south that brought in some traffic to trackers for CBP and also they had their, a Chinook was out there. The helicopter for the army, they were helping, they were assisting CBP with one of their projects, the repeater. So they were flying out, you know, two or three times. And I mean, you're talking six hundred gallons of fuel each flight back and forth. And they were here for like three days. So that was, that was a good month. And as you can see, the Jet A has the higher sales. That's like almost a given. I don't know. Fuel sold in fiscal, the fiscal years, you can see there, it went down nineteen and twenty. I can blame COVID. I'm not sure that that would probably be it, you know. The totals, so in fiscal year eighteen nineteen, sales were approximately six hundred and thirty, thirty one thousand. And then nineteen and twenty, they dropped down to five hundred and ninety thousand. These are the figures, not, not the gallons. And it jumped back up to seven hundred and twenty four for this, for this past fiscal year. Which was, which was not bad. And the last slide, if you can see that little white trail right there. That's Blue Origin, I seen from the airport and Van Halen, which you would think would be, so it's looking out the back door, which the back door faces this, so it'd be like right. I just thought I'd throw that.
Got a question.
That Megan can answer.
When you were talking with the, the stripe and that the contractor was going to provide paint for us. Is there going to be any charge or they just provide that?
No, no, that's, well, that's part of the project. Yeah. They, they just didn't have the, the right paint.
Right. Okay. Any additional charges?
Yeah, no, no, they're, they're going to stripe it down. In fact, I think he, he did mention that our, that particular runway was the fastest one they've done so far. He goes, it didn't have much, much issue, so they didn't use, the material was, was real low.
Perspective, this is a five hundred and ninety thousand dollar project.
Fifty nine thousand, yes. Good deal.
Yeah, we did.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll go to public hearings and we'll go with city manager.
Public hearing to obtain citizen views and comments on the second and final reading ordinance twenty twenty one dash eleven dash oh one. An ordinance amending chapter twenty three, city council to the Alpine Code of Ordinances, amending article one in general, amending article two, rules of procedure establishing article three, rules of decorum.
Yes, sir.
Rick Stevens, Ward five, I commented on the same comments on this first reading. The council has chosen not to take any action. I have retained legal counsel and my first recommendation is not to pass this ordinance as written because it violates state law. And within the draft ordinance itself, you violate your own rules. And I'll just point out a couple of those. One, it allows silence as a, as being determined as an affirmative vote. Yet in your own rules, you require that you record voting results. So how can it be silent and then record results when there's nothing stated? Second is that you cannot restrict citizen comments with regard to performance of council. That is against the law according to fifty five one dot zero zero seven. Certainly maintained neither, but you cannot tell a citizen they cannot make comments about the city council's performance whether you like it or not. That is against state law. Third, you cannot restrict citizens bringing computers in, which you have added in that. It is against the law to preclude citizens from being able to use recording devices or whatever tool they use. You certainly restrict them from using cell phones for interrupting the meeting, but you cannot restrict them from bringing computers in. Your current ordinance has that. And the, the last item that you have in there is you made comment that it is not appropriate or not allowed for a resident to talk about a point of order. Should the city council violate its own ordinance, which is chapter twenty three and in fact law? And if you violate your own ordinance, residents can in fact legitimately stand up and call for a point of order. So I think there's some significant work that needs to get done on this ordinance prior to passage. I recommend you don't pass it. And certainly I'm always just willing to talk to someone if they ever want to get that.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else? Okay. Want to, item two.
Public hearing to obtain citizen views and comments on the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty one dash eleven dash oh two. An ordinance recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, amending the coin operated machine ordinance by updating the fee schedule and updating the special use permit fee.
Okay, any comments? Seeing. Okay, seeing none. Let's go ahead and move to item three.
Public hearing to obtain citizen views and comments on the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty one dash eleven dash oh three. An ordinance authorizing the vacation abandonment and sale of approximately point one one acres of city property for the appraised value of six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. The public property considered for sale being an unimproved platted alley located in block fifty three of the original town site of Alpine to a budding property owner, Chisos Gury, authorizing the city manager to execute a deed without warranty, directing that the funds be deposited in the general fund for the purpose of street improvements.
Okay, any public comments? None? Okay. Let's go ahead and move forward to the consent agenda. Minutes, financial reports, department written reports, board appointments, et cetera. Notice to the public, the following items are routine administrative nature. The council has been furnished with background and support material on each item or has been discussed at a previous meeting. All items will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a council member. In which event, the item or items will immediately be withdrawn for individual considerations in a stumbles sequence after the items not requiring separate discussion have been acted upon. The remaining items will be adopted by one vote.
Item one, approval of November second, twenty twenty one, regular meeting minutes. Item two, approval of excused absence of Council Rodriguez from November second, twenty twenty one, city council meeting. Item three, approval of Nancy Davila to arts vacancy on the Hotel Occupancy Tax Committee. Sorry, Judy, I was just on a roll.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
First of all, I move that we remove item number one.
Do you want to vote on that separately then?
Well, there's just, there's just an error on there.
Okay. So you might have come back after we've voted the other items and then correct. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items.
Okay, there's a second. Okay, most have been made in second. Except for item number one, which will vote on it separately, correct? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, like sign. Let's get back to item number one.
On eleven for executive session. It says to deliberate and consider sale of city property located in block twenty seven, original town site to the city of Alpine.
So it's located in block twenty seven, original town site to city of Alpine. That's just like, you know, the language to describe that it's in the city of Alpine.
Okay, so, so it wasn't that we were, I, I took it that we were selling it to the city of Alpine. It was just kind of confusing.
Yeah. No, I mean, I can certainly change it. I can see how it's confusing.
I just don't want somebody else to come later on and try to not know what we were doing.
Okay.
Okay. So you're gonna make a motion on that piece?
I move that we approve the minutes of.
Item one.
Item one.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, motion's been made in second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, motion carries. All right. Let's go on to the information or discussion items.
The first item to discuss tonight is the emergency operations plan. And you'll notice that the packets are a little bit different. We're trying to provide more information, kind of to get outlines and things do kind of drag out a little bit. As we clean things up, one of the things that had been started back in March, of course, this is right after the winter storm, was the city's emergency operation plan. As you recall, I mentioned it prior, that every department was given their own kind of like, go out there, do it, to bring it back to us. We do currently have two departments that are pending, our streets department and our parks department. Marcy has been so graciously to set up some time with them to, to kind of pull the information that she needs from them so that we can also include them because they are a vital part of our emergency operation plan. If you don't know our street crew, they do everything for the city. You should see them out there right now getting set up for art walk. They're, they're just everywhere. So we want to make sure we include what they would be responsible for and things that they could take care of. And we took all fifteen different varieties, setups, how do you want to word it? And we tried to consolidate it. Marcy's the brains behind this one. I kind of said, I trust you. Here they all are. Run with it. So she is here to fill in some of the, the missing links. The main purpose we wanted to do was we wanted it to be consistent. We wanted to have every department following a set type of guidelines. Your purpose, your overview, your preparedness, your actions, communication plans in number and additional information. Some departments will have a little bit more information than others. You'll notice that the police department is a pretty big section as well as animal control. Animal control is also important. When you have an emergency, what happens to your pets? How do you address it? It doesn't just pertain really to Alpine. Our shelter actually assists the whole entire county. A sheriff officer can call and say, hey, we have an incident. I need to house an animal. So we, we took a little bit of, of every single one of them and Marcy spent the time in front of that computer to format it so that she could pull the information and put it under these specific categories. This is a draft. We wanted to have the conversation, what information is, and we have sections that are redundant. You know, emergency contacts are going to be the same for all of us. What information do we need to add, subtract? This also is going to help us as we go into the hazard mitigation, as we work with the COG on the regional emergency plan. How we can try and get Alpine to be more present in that plan. It is a regional county plan. We are tagged in it, but we wanted to make it clear, hey, we're the hub here. We are the biggest city in this area. It's important that you, you know, we have say and we have that input. So one of the things, like I said, Marcy did was she tried to break it all down. Tried to take away the stuff that was not necessarily, I guess, redundant, but the things and that were important and put them up towards the top. What disasters are we addressing to categorize everything? So I'm really just opening this up for discussion. I really like the council's input. Marcy can follow up with a lot of questions. And this is like, this is just the, the first step. We really would like at seventy pages, this to continue to grow. Currently, our emergency management coordinator for the city is the mayor. We outline how it starts with the mayor and how it needs to come down to administration and how our chief of police is very important. The big section, like I mentioned, with the streets is, is understanding how do they work with during a winter storm, the debris. Sanitation is in this, is in here with the recycling. They have it set up that we have a disposal site that, you know, we can get all of the debris into one area. There's just so much information. I just really wanted to get it out there now and not come to with a question you may have or something we may have missed. But to get as much in front of you so that we can get this approved, so that we can start utilizing it. The one thing I do want to address before that Marcy kind of fill in the nuts and bolts is NIMS is really important. This is our national information management system. We are required to actually have employees who are trained. I encourage everyone, even citizens, the one hundred, two hundred and seven hundred levels are free. This gives you the information of I have to ask, I haven't taken it since two thousand and seven, so the command centers, how you set up an emergency command center, the process, just everything that you need. And the reason why it's so important for this city, and I'm gonna go back a few years, is you need to understand how this deals with federal funding. We get certified, we have these, you know, certifications, we have people who are responsible, there's all different levels, including a whole financial section. When we had the fires two thousand and eleven, the city did not receive the funding it should have received for poor lack of documentation. I only understand this part of it because I handled it on the county side. Understanding that you have to report certain things is really important in your emergency plan because once you hit an emergency, you want to make sure you document it properly. Did you follow your plan? Did you follow your steps? Do you have your receipts? Did you keep track of your hours? FEMA will come back and reimburse you a huge chunk of it as long as you have it documented. The NIMS explains all that. The NIMS explains all that. It explains the day one when the emergency hits, who's, uh, how does it start? Who's in control? You know, you get all of your organizations together and you start running with it. Uh, we saw that with the fires. We saw it with the winter storm. Uh, we, we just want to make sure we're prepared. Uh, the police department is one of, really the only department that I'm aware of that has the NIMS training. Um, I was fortunate to get a lot of it through the county, so I have that as well. Um, and if anyone on the board is interested, I'm sorry, council is interested, I have the links to take it. Um, we will implement it with all of our other departments because it's great information. Oh, that's why they're asking for it. So we want to make sure that we had incorporated it in here as well. So I'm gonna let Marcy take over.
Okay.
Just real, just real quick, we also used it through the Zuzu uh search.
Okay, well, good evening, Mayor. So now we'll go through every single of those seventy pages. No, I'm just kidding. Just kidding. Um, Megan honestly encapsulated it pretty well. I did spend a lot of hours in front of the computer, so many that I actually had to stop and work on something else because my eyes were starting to cross. Um, or blur at least, maybe not cross, but um, we do have information for the water department. It's in a different format, the way that they had to report it to the state for TCEQ. So I'm trying to essentially translate from that document into the main six categories that are laid out um in the plan. So that one is in the works and I know that the streets department is actually meeting with text dot and potentially county crews for a winterization meeting coming up for streets.
Yes.
That's on the calendar, yes. Tomorrow. And so after that meeting, I'm meeting with our, um, I'm meeting with Eddie, our director of streets and director of public works to have him download all of his information so I can type it in to create that section. So it is still in process. This is the format that made the most sense to me. As Megan said, I was trying to, I don't want to say reduce the information because all the important information is in there, but to consolidate it to where it seemed the most logical from each, each of the fifteen departments from what they had in there. So these are the six categories that I came up with for the emergency operations plan. If anybody has any input on the format or what else they would like to see, please let me know. Again, this is a draft and it's, it'll be much more, especially after we get in the, the water and wastewater utilities and the streets, it will be much longer than seventy pages. So, any thoughts on what you all see in there now?
Yeah, a lot, you know, when we talk about the command center, um, it's gotta be a place where we can meet also with the county because we need to coordinate all that. Like in the pandemic, we had the tat, the pandemic task force.
Do we have, and, and Mayor, you are, so in the opening section, it does say, you know, mayor is the emergency manager for the city and then the emergency manager for the county is the one for the county. I don't is the emergency location the county location?
That's what we used.
I can definitely add that as the.
Because what we did, we zoomed in on it and so it included the South County and the city also. And we, there was uh eight members in that committee.
And is that the designated meeting?
No, it wasn't really. That, that's the one we chose for the pandemic because uh we couldn't meet anywhere else in, in uh in person, so we just zoomed in on it and
Okay.
that's what we've been using.
Okay, I will maybe talk with Chief and see if, see what we want to add is our, I guess, say is our command center for instance.
Station, the western of the fire station has a conference.
Okay, so that is it.
And that would be logical from, you know, going forward just to meet there because that's where the communications are at.
Okay. Sorry, I'm taking notes. Um, I also added in there, and I don't know if it needs to be brought out more, but I think that Geo has done an awesome job during the pandemic especially of keeping up the website and I don't know if now those duties have been, you know, delegated. Um, but the, but our website is a wealth of information and so I tried to bring that out in, as a key way that the public most, but not all of whom, you know, could access things through the website as well for information.
Right.
So I, I'm, you know, I think that when something happens, we should be able, and can, post it on our website with the most up-to-date information that we have.
Right, and then.
If we all have power and working, you know, devices at that point.
Yeah, and during the pandemic, we had city manager included in that committee also. So all, everything we discussed there was put in, in on the Wood City website.
Right, right. I mean, it was, it was.
Yeah, it was great.
It was a really good pandemic website. And we had all kinds of information for the public on there. We could also, um, if it's appropriate, add information on the NIMS classes just to our website.
I think that'd be great.
Yeah.
And she does call out the communication and to make sure that the city does provide a clear message so that we try not to create extra confusion and and questions. So she does try to call that all out and she does provide, like, how to identify the audience, the forms of communication we can use because depending on the, the disaster or the emergency, we may not have websites, we may not have cell phones available. So we, we try to, or Marcy did it, like I said, the bulk of the work, look at it from every view, every possibility. Even though we don't want to, we did.
Yeah. And, you know, we also include like the hospital in on that and Sol Ross, that was part of the commission, everybody in the city and county was aware as to what was going on.
Believe that most all of those numbers are in there somewhere in the emergency contact numbers. I don't know if they're all in the one upfront or if they're in a different section. I'd have to relook at it. But, um, also this is reminding me that I don't know if the Sunshine House number for coordination for those folks, you know, for seniors that might not have technology to, I'm gonna add that too, okay? Anything else on that?
About three years ago, we met also with UP and we had a hazard, um, some hazard training and what to do and whatnot and what each car contains.
Oh, the, uh, yes.
That was at Van Horn.
The little signs.
Yeah.
My, my favorite, this is horrible, but my favorite is the corrosive material with the hand that's like halfway corroded. That was a horrible sign.
It catches your eye.
That's the one that stuck out.
Catches your eye.
Yeah. Um, that's, we are, they're included in a regional discussion with the council of governments out of.
Right.
Part of that one.
Right, with the code.
And we do definitely have plan of actions for training real. We don't do much because we're not hazmat trained, but we clearly, we do have protocol for that, that it's included in the regional plan. Anything else on that one?
Anybody?
Speaking of.
Is the format easy on the eyes?
It is.
The big section will be water and wastewater, yes. And we have to now be in compliance with Senate Bill three. So we have additional requirements set by the state that we'll have to implement into the policy.
I wish that I could have continued Chris Rugia with the visitor centers formatting that he had for his department's plan just because his was the prettiest. It was the best formatted, the most visual, but I had to dumb it down a little bit to I had to simplify it to kind of get everything to fit right. And I just don't have those skills that he does.
It looks good, Marcy. That's a lot of work.
Thank you.
Thank you for sitting and doing it.
Yep, it's a lot of reading.
A lot of cut and paste and, yes.
Well, they will come back before council.
And it is technically a draft working document at this point. Correct?
So if you have any input, please don't hesitate to reach out to me and.
But it will need to be approved at some point in the nearest future.
Like the next week.
Well, I mean.
We won't have water and wastewater done.
No pressure at all.
But I mean, winter is here. It needs to be done pretty quickly.
Yes.
So. Okay, I'm the next item. That's the only reason I'm hovering.
So, the next item, if I can forward here, um, is the missed opportunity city matching requirements for grants. Marcy and I have done a lot of one-on-ones and kind of she comes in and, oh, what about this? And let's do this. And, oh, well, we didn't get this and, and the let's spin. We have the discussion and I, I, I kind of asked her to kind of go through and look at everything that, that's coming. Um, there is a wealth of grants, um, especially coming down from the government, the federal government. Mayor keeps bugging me on that one trillion, or one trillion dollar infrastructure. Um, we don't know how it's going to come down. Um, but one of the things that I wanted to address now, um, especially when it comes to the budgeting and the finance side, is we take on a lot of responsibility on the matching side. Um, for instance, the airport. We have basically obligated the airport to funding that is not necessarily readily available. We make it work. Um, one of the things Marcy brought in is we did not get approved for a tech thought grant. Four hundred thousand matches.
Just found out.
I'm not sure where the money was going to come from. As we apply and move with all of these different grant opportunities, I wanted to bring the realistic side to council to understand that, yes, we can go out for every grant that is out there that we qualify for, but we have to make sure we provide the matching. And it, it is, it is, you know, it's just simple, Megan, it's just time. Well, when you have a short staff base, time is very valuable. Taking on additional responsibilities with a team of five people when you need a team of eleven is a lot harder. So I asked her to go through all of the ones that are upcoming. And yes, they have a well, wealth of benefits to the city. I'm not going to deny that. But at the same time, the city has to make that hard decision with where's the money going to come from. The biggest debate during the budgeting process was the reserves, um, using the fund balance. We are in a position right now, we, we have to, we, we have a Texas Parks and Wildlife grant that has a city matching, it's two hundred and seventeen thousand.
Over three years.
So we have to budget the money because it's not just readily available. So I really wanted to just get this open. Have it very visible because as we go through this next budget process, um, as we go through all these grant opportunities, to have that hard discussion with where's the money going to come from, yes, it may be an added benefit to the city, but at what cost? So she prepared a, a great little handout, um, kind of went through where we're at, what we have, but she provided that nitty-gritty of the grants that are available that have the matching. Um, where would the city pull it from? Um, I bring up the airport because we are already obligated. Um, he has a very tight budget. If you look at the parks department, we have put aside seventy-five thousand as the first part of that matching. Um, the money's got to come from somewhere. So I wanted to have this discussion now. Um, not only to help provide guidance of what we move forward in the future, um, but kind of have that initial thought process of what options can we establish now? What financial policies, procedures we can place to, to protect us so that when we have this great opportunity come, hey, the city's already planned and organized, prepared and put something aside. Council goes through, approves, how do we replenish that account? There's a wealth of, of, of availability and information and I just want to get this started now because we are moving into a one trillion dollar infrastructure that, you know, we don't know what it's going to bring back. Um, the ARPA funds, those all have, you know, obligations. Um, so I'd really like Marcy to kind of run down because she did, she did take some time after she'd be emergency operation plan to put this together.
Um, I do not have a presentation for you. I just have the handout that was included in the packet. And it really is just a short and sweet memo. It basically says, look, we've gotten a lot of grants. You know, we've, we're managing eleven grants totaling one point five million. The city's either direct cash or staff time matching to that was about twenty-two point four percent or three hundred and thirty-six thousand and change. So that's a great ratio. That's, you know, basically eighty-twenty or seventy-eight, twenty-two. Um, which is great. So we're doing good. But then the part that I find myself in when I approach Megan, there are a couple on the list that I'll go through just to give an example. But it's like, well, we could go after this, but then we don't know what line item we're going to pull a matching from. And some of them are really just staff time and loss of resources. Well, okay, but do we have the staff resources even to support that type of project? Which is, again, something that has to be considered in moving forward with any of these because we don't want to promise something that we can't do. Or that we have to hire somebody else to do that costs us even more money. You know, we don't want to get, we don't want to get into that cycle. So and there are a couple of them. And then, um, I have learned just this last year with a whole lot of federal money coming down in a whole lot of different avenues. One of the examples, let's go ahead and flip to the last, to the list I created, the list. Um, there's one under the Economic Development Administration that is funded, you know, it's sort of funneled ARPA funds more for tourism and how to, you know, redevelop your economic base. Those would be so great. And, you know, Chris is a wealth of ideas and whatnot, but it's a twenty percent matching program, even though it's, you know, essentially COVID funds trickled down through the Economic Development Administration.
So I'm going to chime in. Um, the COG has actually reached out to me on that one as well to Martha. Martha had it on the agenda and tabled it because there is that, that back information is how do you get the twenty percent match? And mobile app is already pre-designed in some ways. How do you ensure that that vendor actually gets it and you're not starting from scratch again? So there's a lot of questions that come up with these and, and and she's right, having this app that will benefit the, the, the region is awesome, but each city would have to contribute a match to it. Which no one knows what the match is.
Right, well, it's twenty percent, but of what is the question mark, right? And, you know, Alpine is not the only city that finds itself in this situation right now. Lot, probably, I mean, a lot of small towns and communities really are not prepared for the amount of funding availability that is sort of avalanching down from the federal government through different avenues at this point. I mean, you know, when you've got an administrative staff of, I don't know the number of the administrative staff, but limited staffing and no money in your back pocket set aside for matching grants, you can't do all of this. You could have all the ideas in the world, but you can't, you can't make them happen without really getting into trouble and someone going to jail, which nobody wants. So, that's part of, that's the main part of this discussion, is that we're still doing what we can. We've gone after police department grants where we don't have to, you know, pay anything out except for staff time to manage. Um, and those, you know, we will continue to bring to council. But the ones, and there's some bigger ones on here. I mean, all of the wa, the water and wastewater infrastructure opportunities, I have to cough. Excuse me. Um, all of those are going to be like low-interest loans, so we have to put up for it or it's incurring debt of some kind for big, big numbers for infrastructure fix. Um, FEMA has one that we had actually applied to last year, but they didn't fund it all. And we've touched on this, Megan touched on this at a previous council meeting recently. The application is actually due in two weeks, but we don't have our set aside. We don't know where we would get that money. So basically, we can't even apply to that one, even though it would really benefit a lot of planning, code enforcement, you know, um, sort of a rework of the zoning and drought contingency plan update that we have to do anyway legally. Um, historical properties, which would be a new component to everything. So, would have been great, but we're not in a position to go after it. And so we wanted to just bring to council, please don't forget these types of challenges and limitations when we start talking about budget. There is on my memo page, the second page discusses possible solutions and next steps. And this is, I know that the section is uh, of the agenda is actually information or discussion, but I thought maybe it could be information and discussions to get some feedback on it. So, under possible solutions and next steps. Financially, city council could, dot, 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 I mean, open to ideas on what you all might have as a possible solution for, for this. Um, I did have an idea for procedurally, you know, in the future, a grant matching, I don't know if it would be a line item or an account or a fund, that's Megan's job. But a certain set aside fund to use so we can react or act on these opportunities as they come down. Um, that would be good, like in this particular case, that would be great. And strategically, I think the other component to that would be the city establishing a strategic plan, which is often would be the city establishing a strategic plan, which is often required to reference, or you get a lot more points if you have something like that in the application. A strategic plan structured to, you know, to help us as a community understand what our priorities are. We know that it's infrastructure and streets, nobody likes the potholes. But, you know, what else as a community are we wanting to focus on? And let that input and that strategic plan be our guide. So that was my other idea. So let's do the discussion part now.
You know, there was a wealth of information in here, and a lot of, we're not gonna do it overnight. We really had to think about it. And one thing that I've talked to Megan for some time is, you know, yeah, grants are there all over the place, but it gets, gets the city in trouble also, because you gotta pay them back, your percentage of it. So I think this is something that council really needs to look at closely. And pick out the ones that are important, and do we have the monies coordinated with Megan and the finance department? Do we have the monies to go, really go after some of these funds and stuff? So, it's, you know, something that's gonna, we have to really put a lot of thought into it. And you've got us going in the right direction right now, so we know what to be looking for, and you know.
Right, and I will tell you that, and until we know where some of, where any of these that require matching funds are coming from, we probably will not present any future grant opportunities that require matching funds, because we know we don't have it in our back pocket.
Right.
Like I said, the ones that come up that don't require matching, those are a different story. But these that do are the, obviously, the bigger ticket items, we need, you know, we need to have guidance on those.
Absolutely.
And this is why I wanted it brought up, it really is a timing issue. As we move into January, the budget process actually does start. And I want the council and public feedback as well, is when we start having these discussions, a strategic plan is important. That is one of my focuses moving forward with help of Marcy. To really understand, we can go out for grants all day, but they may not be as beneficial to the city as we think they are. Because it's money, oh, let's get, it's free money, well, not quite. But to have these discussions and to start now, so that as we go into the next, we call them grant seasons, they kind of all group around the same time periods, is as we present to council, it's having that understanding is, these are your possibilities, does it fit really the plan of the city in, and what are we looking for? I know we talk about the infrastructure, because that's the most visible. When, if you drove down this weekend over there off of seventeen oh three, you saw the water coming out of the ground. You, you saw that nice fountain, because we had three water breaks in two days. So they're very visual, the potholes. But there's a whole other side of a strategic plan that we wanna start looking forward to and working on, so that when we go through the budget process, and this kind of goes with the performance budgeting is, we know what we're targeting, it's not just a random, we're gonna do the best we can, it's, we wanna target, we wanna, we wanna provide the benefits and services, just like our mission statement, the best quality service sources.
Right, I mean, you know, we don't have the funds on hand to do the throw spaghetti at the wall and see what sticks method. We have to be pretty strategic about where we're saying that we're gonna spend money when we do have it.
And I think maybe we should have a workshop with the council and the public.
Oh, we are.
Oh, very good.
Gotta get it started.
Because we do need the public's.
Yes, and I have that in there, for those of you that don't have a copy of the packet, it's, for those of you that don't know, I'm actually a city planner by education and twenty years of experience, so grant writing is what I have pulled and bring to the city in this capacity. But I look forward to standing in front of a lot of people and getting to ride on a giant Post-it sticky board, so.
And this isn't the first time the city's, you know, tried this approach, but it really is the best, that's why it comes back up. It's to really get all of that input, not only from council, but from the public.
Right.
Absolutely.
Yep, and I expect to see all of y'all here, that means.
So that's all I have on this item. Anybody has any questions or anything to add tonight?
I think the public doesn't understand that when you get a grant, it's got matching, and it's got stipulation.
Oh, for sure.
I just think you're gonna run out there and get that grant.
If you've ever tried.
Whatever you want with it.
If you've ever had to try to find three cents on a federal grant, let me tell you, they want you to mail it to the draw. Three cents, they are very particular.
We are truly blessed to have Marcy working with us. Couple years ago, when, when I was working on grants for myself, I've been doing it for about ten years now, I did not wanna put in for any grants, because I knew I was. And now I'm just throwing stuff at Marcy.
Now it's me. Marcy's the wall, he's. Yeah.
Yeah, and so, we are truly blessed, Marcy.
That's all I got?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, my friend. So public, cameras rolling, y'all not, I saw heads nod, yes, so I'm gonna see you at the workshop. Okay.
Good with the number three? Okay, and so the action items. Approve the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one eleven dash oh one, and ordinance amending chapter twenty-three, city council to the Alpine Code of Ordinances, amending Article One in general, amending Article Two Rules of Procedure, establishing Article Three Rules of Decor.
Okay, need a motion, please.
I'd like to approve the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eleven dash oh one.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion is made, second discussion.
Okay, I have problems with some of it. First of all, thank you, Gio, for working on it, I know you've worked really hard and took from a lot of other cities and all that. And I know that there is a need to try to have more effective meetings, and I know that they have to run smoothly and all that, but I feel that we're choosing to shut out all effective communication between council and, and the citizens, and that we're limiting dialogue. I think that as council members, we don't know everything that we need to know. And I think that there are people out there that we could learn from, people that could, could show us how to do some of the things. I, for one, know that I could learn a lot from everybody sitting here. And I feel that we're shutting down all that communication, and I feel that it's really important that we keep it open. We keep saying we want input from people, that we want people to show up to workshops and all that. Well, we need to be able to tell them that when they show up, and that when they're here, we're willing to listen, and we're willing to have a dialogue with you, and not just have you come up and say something, and not be able to respond to it, and not be able to question or anything of that nature.
Okay, anybody else? Seeing none, then let's go ahead and vote on it, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Oppose? Okay, we've got four to one. So we're to item number two.
Approve the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eleven dash oh two, and ordinance recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, amending the coin-operated machine ordinance to include a total allowable machines per stall at fulfillment, updating the fee schedule and updating the special use permit.
Okay, entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-one dash eleven dash zero two.
And I need a second, second, okay, motion's made, second discussion.
I'm sorry, I know it's me again, but I wasn't at the last meeting, so I wasn't able to say anything. I was a little disappointed that we failed to, to put a limit on, on some of these. I do realize that it brings in a lot of money, and I do realize that some people enjoy it. But we've had a lot of issues with these, with these types of businesses here. We can get some input from Daryl if anybody wants to know. They're, they are not all operating as they're supposed to. They are, are giving out cash money, as has been found by the numerous arrests that we've had, by the numerous times that they've been shut down. And I feel that that's not being taken into consideration.
Anybody else?
Would it be proper, Daryl just made a comment, referenced some of the issues that we have?
Yeah, because he's the one that's got to go and follow up on this, on this stuff. And I've also got some concerns, and along Chris's, Ryan thought that these operators came into the city during the pandemic. And this is when people were desperate for money. So they started playing these slot machines, and that's when all of a sudden, all these machines appeared. There have been a lot of issues with them, they've been shut down, and one in particular shut down, then shortly thereafter, it reopened again. Okay, they're not all opened up. One thing that was felt to be brought up at the meeting was, does this gentleman own the machines themselves, or is he working for a corporation? Okay, and he's just like the middleman? Because that's what appears to be in all the different cities that I've, I've seen, that they hire new folks, they reopen, but the money still goes to that one pocket. How much is really, you know, yeah, we get money and permits and whatnot, but how much money actually benefits our citizens? You know, a kind of a payback to our citizens for being here. That's what kind of what concerns me is that that question was not brought up, and it was probably my fault also, that is this money really staying in Alpine, or is it going out elsewhere?
So I appreciate y'all asking me to come up here and talk in reference to it. The, it's, I don't like, my personally, I do not like unlimited amount. It's, it's hard for us to keep track of what they already have. We're having to look at certain numbers on the back of their machines, where there's, there's gambling going on. We've, we've made arrests at almost every single one of them, in reference to gambling. They have cases filed in with the county court, it's Steve Houston's office. And what I'm seeing is a lot of Asian folk that, that are working out of Arlington. Most of these all have Arlington addresses, and so there has to be some type of scheme going on there in Arlington, that these guys are the middlemen, and that they're working for somebody else, basically. They're, they're being put down as managers, but they're all basically, it seems like they're all working for somebody else, because it's, it's, it can't be just pure incident that, that all these people are coming from, from one location. So, we have had numerous problems, there's, we have, we know of drug activity going on at, at some of them. And so, it's, it's, I think it gives us a black eye. Yeah, but we continue to patrol these game rooms, monitor who's going in and out of them, and trying to determine if there's any illegal gambling going on. And, and we've seen it firsthand, so.
Can you tell me, to your knowledge, are there any that are locally owned, that you can say the money's staying here?
Well, the American Legion has one that, that falls under the five oh one C three, but the ones that are, they're being operated, they continue to have addresses from out of town, they're, they're, they're all living in, either in a hotel room, or they're all shacking up together in one, one house. And so, it doesn't look like it's staying local, to be honest.
Can these, to Karen's point, can they win money, or are they truly just winning a coffee cup or something?
No, sir, they're, they're winning money. I mean, when we started the investigation, the first one I talked to, the, I say he's an old man, he's probably just a couple years older than me, but, yeah, he said he was giving out masks. And, and I, and I said, well, what is the, the money that you have here, why does it say twenty-five hundred? And so, it's, it's just lies, so.
A lot of masks.
Yeah, that's a lot of masks.
And I think the only revenue we get is the licensing fee.
But is the licensing fee worth all the profit that comes with it?
No, I understand that part, but there is some revenue. Whether it's enough to warrant going ahead, I don't know.
Daryl, you're monitoring these daily?
Yes, ma'am, no, not daily, no, ma'am.
And you go in and actually look at the machines you're checking out?
Yes, ma'am.
They have a list?
So when, when they go to code enforcement to request these permits, they have to provide a list of every single machine that they're gonna be using, and it has a serial number on the back. And so when we go in there, and on that, that's a different type of inspection. On that one, we'll, we'll basically shut them down.
Here's a machine grease, and where you put like a tape across it.
Right, and so basically. Yeah, well, we'll pull out the back, pull out the motherboard out of it, and to determine the serial numbers.
What's the difference when the controller comes in? They come in and take the money, right? When the controller steps in and shuts them down?
Right.
Then they take that, so what's cash?
So.
Explain this to me, because that's the only side of it, I know.
So the bad part about it is if, if we go into a seizure, then all that stuff, we have to store it, we have to inventory every single bit of it, and that's where it falls hard on us. Y'all remember when we did these things along with DPS? And that was the hard part, is that we had to be able to, to identify everything, and then if we were gonna seize it, that goes to Alpine Police Department and into our evidence room, and that we're already jam-packed in there. And so, and so what we do is file these charges of, of class A misdemeanor of gambling, and file them with Steve Houston.
And that's all it can be, is a misdemeanor?
Yes, ma'am. Of course, there's, if they, if they've already been convicted, and.
If they're convicted, they're not supposed to get a license.
Well, that's the other thing.
So get someone else to come in, put another name, the same owner, just send somebody else.
So, our code enforcement, again, they go through it. One of the new processes that we're going through, checking their criminal history, if they, if they have a criminal history of it already, or some type of criminal offense, then they're denied the permit. All they do is just find somebody else that has a clean record.
Yeah, and something that wasn't covered, you know, he's already got a, a gaming room. How much revenue is that one facility generate? Okay, we don't know that now, he wants more machines, just saw more machines, okay? So, to me, I wanna know what kind of revenue is, how much do we give unlimited?
So one guy actually titled on himself, one of our local gamblers, and he, he was supposed to win sixty-five, bronze sixty-five hundred dollars, and they have a minimum that they'll dish out as twenty-five hundred, and that's usually the number they choose. And so, he, he basically said he was, yeah, he was gambling, and he was mad that he didn't get his money, and so he was gonna, we, unfortunately, we had other offenses on him, but we ended up making an arrest on the, on the business. That's the one that was right across the street. And so, we made an arrest on that, and he couldn't provide the documentation, and so we ended up pressing him for gambling. Yeah, if, like, like Karen did say, it's gonna be legal eventually, but it, right now, it's causing problems. It needs to be something.
And I'm looking at that, I mean, the income for Alpine's not all that great. And so people are desperate, like, when you go to Vegas, I see people going, you know, to ATM, just bam bam, and losing money. Well, it's the same thing here, you know, people don't have the money, and, and so, you know, maybe I don't go to the grocery store tomorrow. I'll input that money in, hopes to win something, and if that, it doesn't happen, you go empty-handed. So I do have an issue with some of those, I'll be quite frank. I think that there needs to be more information on this gentleman. Is he working for himself, or is he working for a corporation, or where's the money going to? What's the income coming out of those machines?
You know, I, I talked, I've talked to other agencies. Y'all know Jason Little, Jason Little, went to work here, and now he's the chief of police in Crane. He has local folks, he has, I think he's three game rooms, and there are local folks that are, that are running those game rooms. And, and so, he, he has, I, I don't understand what, how, or why we have these Vietnamese coming to Alpine, opening these game rooms, and why Alpine? But it's happening, and I don't understand why, why don't they choose Crane, because Crane has awful money. They would be making more money over there, but they chose Alpine, so. Uh they they chose Alpine, so.
Is he having the same problems with Crane?
No, sir. No, sir.
Those are locally only.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you know, money hands is uh.
Is Fort Stockton as well?
Fort Stockton is the other one.
And if you live outside of Odessa, the Long River County, they it's a mess.
Yeah, so I mean.
I think we should be limiting them that we're just giving them too much leeway.
Yeah.
I could look at the uh the state laws. We can't ban them, but we can regulate them. I can come back to y'all at the next meeting and tell y'all what the parameters are, what y'all can and can't do.
Prior to us having code enforcement taking care of that, I was doing that and I was checking our criminal history and. And even back then, I started noticing the the. The. Arlington was involved in and so uh if they had any type of criminal history, I'd straight up tell them that.
We need we need really put some thought into this uh. Given unlimited amount is to me, I I don't think that's the right way to go. And I think it's going to harm our citizens.
And and that's one of the things, the awareness of our citizens to to be aware. It doesn't look right, so.
Yep. Quick second. But anyway, so any more discussion on this before we thank you guys, hold on. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Oppose. It's unanimous. Motion fails. Thank you. Let's uh. And let's see, let's go to item number three.
Approve the second and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty one dash eleven dash O three. An ordinance authorizing the vacation abandonment and sale of approximately point one one acres of city property. For the appraised value of six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, the public property considered for sale is an unimproved platted alley. Located in block fifty three of the original town site of Alpine to a budding property owner, Chisos Brewing Company. Authorizing the city manager to execute a deed without warranty directing the funds from the sale of the city's interest be deposited in the general fund for the purpose of street improvements.
Okay, need a motion. Need a motion on this.
I move that we approve the second and final reading of the ordinance twenty twenty one dash eleven dash zero three.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's made in second, discussion.
Once again, I wasn't here last week, but I do know that uh. Councilman Johnson had had an issue uh what what he voiced was a concern over the noise level. I do know that there are there are other bars located there, the crystal bar. I mean, you can hear for blocks and blocks away. I'd like to hear from Mr. Fielder or his son and see if they have made concessions for this and what they have. Planned and what we can look at. I mean, uh it it's very good. I mean. It was good something to bring up, but I want to hear from from either one of them and see if if they've taken into account. Some of these issues.
Fielder speaking today?
Of course, anybody, anybody. I'd just like to, yes.
She was going to anyway.
Thank you so much for the question. Um noise abatement is something that we have thought about too because we live. Not too far from the crystal and we can hear it many nights. So we have asked our architects to to be very careful about placing sources of knowledge away from the neighborhood. Toward the railroad side, so. Our brewery building itself will be built along the backside of the property with the garden. Towards the railroad side, the north side and at uh noise would happen there. We also are very serious about not using amplification of instruments. An acoustic guitar is much more pleasant anyway. Where there is garden that abuts the neighborhood behind us, we have created a a zone that we're calling. The VIP garden. With a high two high walls between the noise and the neighborhood so that we would muffle the noise. So we are sensitive to the fact that most bars make noise and honestly, there will probably be festival weekends when there. Festivals all over the place and noise will be made, but we are taking active steps to try to mitigate that to the extent that we can.
Seeing as that is in a residential area, can you tell me what steps you've taken as far as the parking to? I mean, are. People going to be parked on the side of the road, blocking people's driveways?
I can tell you that we are taking active steps to purchase nearby property that will provide off-street parking adequate to the needs of the brewery. And probably the near some of the nearby businesses too. We haven't yet secured a final sale, but we will have, I think, four. Handicap parking spaces on our property off-street. And then we will have off-street parking at a paid lot nearby. We haven't concluded that sale yet, but we're very close to doing so. And we will have more than adequate parking for the size of the brewery.
And some of these bigger uh. Like you said, festivals, you know, when there there's going on everywhere or anything bigger that you have. Do you all have plans to hire security when you expect a pretty big turnout?
It would be a privilege to have a big enough turnout to be able to hire security. We're hoping, we're hoping that that would happen. We want to be very responsible citizens, so we will do everything we can. To support the community and the neighborhood and the nearby businesses. We're very sensitive to that. And we are looking to you and to the nearby businesses and citizens for suggestions about how we can continue. To to be aware of all of those things and address those with our planners and our architects and our garden designers.
I would like to say that I did speak to Mr. Fielder and his son. And they are concerned not only with your business, but what else is going to do with Murphy Street? How else they can help other other businesses. Revitalize the area, how they can get food trucks across the street, how they can help other businesses. So I do want to let the people know that that they are. Taking other people into account. They are taking that whole area of Murphy Street. And uh I had had a very nice visit and uh I was very impressed with the time and and. That y'all have taken to 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 take everything into consideration, most of all the people of Alpine.
Thank you. We really want to be very good citizens and we want to contribute to the community and to general prosperity.
I like the fact.
World-class facility.
I like the fact that you're looking to provide parking because Murphy Street is a very narrow street. And parking is at a premium in that area.
Well, and we hope that. We hope that we can work with local merchants to create a plan to beautify some sections of Murphy Street and build nice sidewalks and and trees. And it's really important to keep the cars away from the pedestrians, so that that is all something that we're trying to take into consideration.
Okay, I asked Judge Cole this morning what she thought of it. She has a law office almost across the street from it. She said she was looking forward to it.
Good. I promise you, we are we are planning to build a facility in a garden that Alpine will be very, very proud of.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Any other questions?
Well, I'm glad that you're focusing on the acoustic end of the music because that is, I I think it's a a better sound anyway. Than, you know, amplifying everything.
Hallelujah.
So thank you for pointing that out.
You bet.
Any other questions?
I I not a question, but I wanted, well, yes, it is. On the price, Megan, uh sixty nine fifty, I do realize that there's an easement that the city will be keeping. I think we need to adjust that price. That price does include the easement that the city is keeping. And I think it'd only be fair that we not make them pay for the part that we're actually going to be keeping.
That is completely your decision.
Okay. I thought that we had talked about that. You talking about the alley in the back, the easement back there?
The city's going to be keeping an easement and when they did the the survey, it included that property.
Yeah.
So if we're going to keep some, I feel that we need to give them.
I think if that was brought up at the discussion, that was part of the deal with abandoned pieces of section because it wasn't utilized or.
We do have utilities.
Yeah, we have utilities to do that.
The you the the easement is to to because we have that the line going through that that alley. Um Jill did bring up that he believes that the government code says we have to sell it at fair market value.
And our fair market value is determined by the appraisal we got.
So we so we can't, Rod, we can't.
No, we.
This the the survey includes it, so even though it includes that, we can't.
Yeah, you'd be.
You know what I'm saying?
You you're better off to just follow the appraisal. That's the safe thing to do. Because it would be like, y'all could be trying to sell other property to somebody. At the price that y'all decide whether the fair market value, we don't know what the fair market value is at that alley, but we have a certified appraiser who gave us the opinion.
Okay, well, I certainly don't want them to have to get another appraisal.
Yeah.
But I think that's what happened on the section third up in that area. They had come in and they had to revalue it because it come in at like nineteen thousand. And they came back and it wasn't a little bit more, but they had to go through all of that to figure it out.
Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor of it, raise your right hand. Oppose. Okay, it'll be four to one. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's go to item number four.
Approved resolution twenty twenty one dash eleven dash thirteen, a resolution supporting the adoption approval of the Texas. Opioid Abatement Fund Council and Settlement Allocation Term Chief Agreement. For the resolution of serving claims against certain pharmaceutical companies related to the misuse of opiates in the state.
Okay, I need a motion, please.
I make a motion with the search of the resolutions for the adoption approval of the Texas opioid abatement fund council and settlement allocation term sheet.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, motion made in second, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Oppose, like sign, motion carries. Item five.
Approved resolution twenty twenty one dash eleven dash fourteen, a resolution providing. For the renewal of West Texas National Bank as a pository bank for the city of Alpine.
Okay, need a motion.
I move that we approve resolution twenty twenty one dash eleven dash fourteen of resolution providing for the renewal of West Texas National Bank.
Okay, sir.
Pository.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second, discussion. No discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. Unanimous, thank you. Let's go to item number six.
Provided advice and consent on the recommendation to hire Keith Seeger for director of utilities.
Okay, I'll need a motion for this.
I move that we provide advice and consent on the recommendation to hire Keith Seeger for director of utilities.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, motion made in second. I think it's Seeger, you're present. Could you please come to the podium, sir?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, House members. Tell us a little bit about yourself, sir.
My name is Keith Seeger, as you know, and if you've seen the packet in my resume. Uh I'm currently the general manager of the Swanee Water and Sewer District in Dixie County, Florida. Uh I have extensive leadership and management uh in the water, wastewater and chemical industry for the past thirty six years. Um I love the town of Alpine. It's a it's a pretty community. It's grown on me. And I'd like to move here and become a member of this community. I happen to see the opportunity that uh we had a opening for the director of the public utility, so. I sent a resume in and uh. The rest is history. I'm a veteran, United States Army. And what else would you like to know about me?
How'd you find Alpine?
How'd I find Alpine? Because I found a beautiful lady that lives here.
Great answer. And she's here, correct?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
She's a high school teacher, so.
Yeah, going through your resume, you show it's very qualified in that position. And that's what we're looking for and we need somebody that's going to be local that's going to live in Alpine.
Well, that's uh that's I'm in the process of moving here as we speak, so.
Okay, and because we've had quite a turnover in that position. And we do need some leadership.
Sure, I I've had the opportunity to, during my first informal interview, I had a chance to spend a couple of hours. Uh going over your facilities. I met with all of your staff. And to a T, you know, every one of them is looking for some leadership. They want someone to help them become better and become professional. Uh to help you with your image problem that you have, let's be frank, and uh. You know, there's there's some issues there that need to be taken care of right away. So it's not going to be easy, but I'm looking forward to the challenge.
Yeah, and that's something that the waste treatment plant has been lacking for a number of years. And we're trying to bring it up to par where it should be because it'd be devastating and we lose that treatment plant.
There's several issues facing us right from the start, so.
So we do need some leadership out there and and someone that knows the systems.
Well, I believe I can help you with that. Otherwise, I wouldn't be here in front of you tonight.
Okay, and we appreciate that. Thank you. Any questions, guys?
Uh yes, I think one of the things that had us in a little bit of issues was not having a class B license.
Yes, when we updated the job description, we moved it to double Cs for the director. Because our current staff is working towards both these and they have retested. There's one question short. And they're scheduled to retest again.
Okay, and should they not or whatever? Are you willing to?
If I had to go forward and retest and and for for B, I could do that, but. Uh normally, as the as the director of the public utilities, I'm not going to be operating facilities myself, so normally it's just, you know. As you mentioned, you like to learn from the people in the audience and the citizens. You don't necessarily have to know everything. You have to know. Where to find the answers, you know, have to know. But had my having knowledge of what is required doesn't mean I actually have to be licensed to go and do it.
Right, and my concern was just that I know some, we've had people that have been tested and haven't been able to pass and I just don't want to be caught without one again.
Correct.
So I guess I'm asking if all else fails, would you be willing?
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Good question. Anything else? Okay, no more discussion. So all those in favor of hiring Mr. Seeger, raise your right hand. Oppose. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
I'm sure we'll be seen locked.
Sure. I have him scheduled every meeting from now until.
Okay, item seven.
Approved authorization for the city manager to retain special legal counsel arising from a conflict of interest.
Is there a motion? Need a motion, guys.
I move we approve authorization for the city manager to retain special legal counsel arising from a conflict of interest.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Motion's made in second, discussion.
Megan, could you give us a little bit more on what this actually is?
Yes, so um Mr. Pond has um is moving forward with the development of thirty two properties. And there's a long line list or long list of questions. Being legal counsel, I don't feel that it's in the best interest of the city. To go ask him to represent the city in the questions that we have. Um and I know initially it dealt with the sewer and he he's found an alternative to that, but it also does deal with the water. Um I I have a list of of questions, um but honestly, I I really would. Believe in the best interest of the city and for Mr. Pond that we hire an outside counsel to address this. At the end of this, there will have to be contracts in place. There will have to be agreements and Mr. Pond can't write those on behalf of the city.
Right, and that's out in the ETJ, correct?
That's the first question.
Okay, and that's something that kind of concerns me because uh we had a development of uh just east of town. That was outside the city limits and then we incurred all that. And we have major issues with the road and whatnot up there. I just don't want. I just don't want the city to be in that position again. Okay, so I think it needs to go to the county first. Get, go through the county, go through the procedure through them. And then with our, if we decide to get legal counsel, which I highly recommend we do, then we can start working on it. But right now, the first step would be to hire a legal counsel to see where we stand there.
Megan, do we have contracts with Toronto State?
So, and I've actually contacted the county on that one. Toronto State is in the county. The city did inherit all of the utilities. That includes sewer, water, but they're also classified as a subdivision.
So it's put in? The city put it in, though?
No.
No.
So this is where all these long line of questions come in. And the first question really has to do with the ETJ. Because it is in the ETJ, Mr. Pond should contact the county. The county does have subdivision rules and work that route. The county can agree or deny, and it comes back to the city. And then the city comes in. The way it's presented, it is, it's a subdivision. There are 32 homes. I know that we've discussed platting and if we're going to plat, if he's not going to plat. Like I said, but there's, you know, the safety of the water supply. Who's responsible for what, the overall project? Because it is in the county, I have contacted the county to be kind of like, hey, we're kind of buddies here. We have jurisdiction to a limit, they have jurisdiction to a limit. But ultimately, who's going to be responsible?
Has there been talks of annexation?
No. So Toronto Creek is not annexed. Skyway Gardens has been annexed. And we've had a little conversations. They do have pressure issues in that area. And it's not that we may or may not in that direction, but these are all things that would have to be laid out and contracted. And ultimately, the big concern is who is responsible? If we inherit this system or if we don't, how is it going to be regulated? When it comes to the wastewater, you know, one of those questions is we do have an alternate wastewater disposal and you have to be in compliance with TCEQ. And I said...
And where are you going to reach out to an attorney? And that's just, I'm just wondering. Do we have to go outside the area?
I think it would be best to go outside the area. There are legal firms in Midland, El Paso, the first step.
And we have no action through TML to do help us with something like this?
No, I've contacted them. And because we have an attorney, they request, your best bet would be to get another attorney.
Not an engineer?
The legality of it wouldn't cover an engineer.
Could we use Judge Cole?
I don't know if that would be a controversy as it's a judge.
Because they both work together.
Yeah.
Prosecutor and judge.
If it ends up just needing contracts, she should be able to write, though.
I think it's more than just contract. We still have to realize who is going to take responsibility for this. I'd hate to overtax our sewer, water, and all that. And what are we getting out of it?
So ultimately, it comes down to, if it's a subdivision, there's a whole...
I'm just brainstorming all of it, too.
I would like to go out for an RFQ and get that feedback as soon as possible. I think the project's a great idea, 32 additional homes. Housing is a problem in Alpine, we all agree on that. But I want to ensure for the best interest of the city that we do this correctly and we don't have those open-ended questions that not only staff or myself don't feel comfortable asking.
Has he had an engineer do some kind of study to see whether Alpine could handle this?
Not that I'm aware, you'd have to ask Mr. Pond directly. I know he has an engineer that he's been utilizing.
I have an engineer, we have an engineer, we've engineered the project. All I'm requesting is to be able to tap into the city water system according to city water rules. I can fly with that.
So you're not, you're not willing to have him do a study whether the city of Alpine and our infrastructure can actually handle 30-plus more modular homes?
I'm happy to have him do that, but that's probably something an Alpine engineer should do.
Well, no, I don't think the city should bear the cost of it. I mean, that is private.
I don't mean to interrupt, but the first question is the county or the city who's...
I'm in the county, I'm not in the city.
But you're asking, but you're asking to tap into city resources.
Just, you have, but you have city. You have probably over 100 houses outside the city that use city water services all over town.
Yeah, we have numerous issues with our water pressure all over town and then adding more. I'm not saying that I'm not for it. I'm just saying that we need to actually really look into it and whether the city can handle it. And I think going through an attorney and getting one that is from out of town would probably be our best bet to get an impartial.
Because we had the issue come up a couple of years ago in the McElroy when they tried to give it to us. And we were going to get handed something that we were going to get in trouble with. Okay, so to me, my recommendation is that we hire an independent attorney.
I agree.
Okay.
Is this a legal issue or an engineering issue? That's...
Well, it come out to both. So, because we don't know what 32 homes, how it's going to impact the water pressure into the city. Okay? So we need to look at all that. We need an attorney and also an engineer. Who's going to pay for the engineering of it? That's the other question.
And then I have a question, like I know Councilman Johnson said that, you know, it'd be just the water that he will be handling the sewer. But so did Holiday Inn. And that has ended up causing us a lot of issues, even though he put it in. And even on the other side, Alpine could cause issues for you, just like Saul Ross is causing issues for Holiday Inn. You could have somebody causing issues for you. It's not just on our end, but actually protecting your end too.
Not protection, see.
But the Holiday Inn is on the city sewer system.
It's not on the city sewer, I'm not proposing.
It's the quality and they're on septic system and they don't have a problem.
Yeah.
But didn't the city, isn't the city, since Marathon Unit went out, are we not pulling out of that one?
They are on city sewer. Rod wants to be on personal sewer, septic tanks, where none of the waste would go into the city system. It would all go into septic tanks. All he's asking for is water.
Yeah, but, and I understand that, but later on, say, the safe side to annex it or they want, they come to the council for annexation. What then? Those septics would impact our sewer system. You know, they have to meet the city requirements or whatnot. And so to me, I recommend...
The county has codes for septic tanks.
That's what Megan is saying, we need to find out who and what.
Yeah, who's responsible.
Right now, we have no idea who's...
The city has plenty of places in the city where you don't provide sewer services also.
I'm for, I recommend that we hire a separate attorney for this.
I agree.
And just to keep the city on the safe side and make it all legal. I'm going to call for the question. All those in favor of hiring an attorney? Raise your right hand. One, two, three. It's three to two. Oppose? Okay, so, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, item number 10, see council comments. And I'm going to start with Councilman Johnson.
I want to thank the people who did the downtown cleanup and the trimming of the trees. I think it's looking really good. And then I also want to thank everyone that's working for Art Walk. Everything seems to be coming together nicely.
I have a whole sticky one.
Oh, you got your sticky thing.
Thank you, Megan, for putting all of that together so I could finally understand the numbers. That's something in itself. Thank you, Abel. It was real cute except for the tiny map and the blue origin I didn't have. So I don't know. Megan, was Avalanche not going to give us a place to have our voice? Did I hear that wrong somewhere?
We do a monthly call.
Well, you need to tell them about our website and NIMs and all that. All that we want to get out there. If you put it on the website and they don't know it's there, they're not going to know it's there, right?
And you can also give me that info.
Marcy did a bunch. But thanks to Karen. Karen, we had the same thoughts. It wasn't, you weren't the odd man out wondering about all of that, is that? That's the second time, that's good. Now I think that's it.
Okay, but it was, you know, good input, a lot of wealth of information. And I want to see the public get involved. But we do have a little breakout session on this. There's a wealth of stuff that we need to go through. And it might take more than maybe one session on this. It's getting the community involved is the main thing. It's not just us sitting here making motions and passing them and stuff like that. This is where the community can actually have their input and suggest what we can, you know, how we can better. Marcy did a great job and put it together. My eyeballs were crossed, I had to take breaks back and forth when I was reading it. But it was all great. It's a good meeting. Again, Karen, thank you for the input. I felt the same way about it. I'll keep the city clean. And I know the chief here wants the same thing. And so, you know, I've been with DPS and then with the chief, the fore chief, when, you know, the machines were being inspected and whatnot. So with that said, and also we got Thanksgiving coming up in another week. So I want to wish you all a happy Thanksgiving. Make sure you're safe. Art Walk, make sure you guys go to Art Walk, okay? Spend a little bit of money here. So with that, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.